There we are. Marvin, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Excellent.
Julie, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, we can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Julie.
Speaker at the bottom on the right, all right.
Oh, it's for... It's Marvin. Is that any better? Is that you, Julie? I don't think so. Julie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can hear you, wonderful.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Okay, this time I will call to order the pre-agenda meeting for the Arica County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, June the 7th, 2022. And in reviewing the agenda, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
We do have some, two items for additional information. One is item 10.1, under Appointments to Boards and Commissions. You have an amended agenda memo, which has all the current applications that we've received to date, and that's on the bench before you. And then also, item 7.1, which is the public hearing on the bench before you as the budget ordinance that, for the board to consider after the budget public hearing.
Okay, are there any other adjustments to the agenda that we're aware of?
Add something under "whole business."
Okay. Anything else? All right, well, then we will adopt that agenda at the 7 o'clock hour, as adjusted. There are no presentations of any awards or recognitions this evening, and no appointments before the board. We will have a public hearing at 7:00 PM to consider the fiscal year 2023 budget. So that brings us up to administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda, for us to hear at this pre-agenda meeting. So I will turn things over to our county manager, Beth Moll, to tee those up.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item on the list is the ECOM Governance Board Discussion with Winborn Consulting, and Julie Heimke is on, virtually with us. So this is, the Governance Board creation and structure is something that came out of the two ECOM assessments that we had performed by Winborn Consulting. And we had a few extra hours in our contract, and because this was a recommendation, and this is a big deal, we want to make sure we get it right. Julie said, hey, you know, I've got some extra hours in the contract, would you like for me to go ahead and give you some recommended structures for that Governance Board, and kind of help set the framework for it? So she has been working on that on our behalf, and I want to say, last week, on a Friday, the public safety, our two public safety representatives met with Julie, virtually, and talked about the initial draft. And we've kind of gone through several different drafts, several different suggestions, several different conversations about the Governance Board. And each time we have a conversation with it, we learn something new, or we come up with a new idea, or she comes up with a new recommendation, or something else to look at. And one of the things after, and what's in your packet, was the draft that the two public safety representatives discussed and looked at. But after that, and through conversations from that, we kind of circled back and said, okay, and one of the things that Julie was talking about is, you know, you have, you already have some type of Governance Board that's in place, which is what we've done several years ago with the sheriff's office, with the law enforcement Governance Board. And so from talking with the sheriff, and talking to him, and seeing, you know, how does that structure work, and has that been successful? Is it working well? And I don't want to speak for the sheriff, because he's sitting back there, but when we talked to him, his Governance Board has worked well for his purpose. And so we started looking at it and say, okay, instead of coming up, coming up with a completely new structure, let's not reinvent the wheel. Let's, let's use what we already have in place, and let's expand it. So with that in mind, another suggestion has come out of that, since the sheriff and the law enforcement group, they already have a Governance Board, to take that structure and mirror it for the other emergency responders. So that's kind of, Julie, I don't know if I stole your thunder or not, but that's kind of where we've gone full circle. And, and I'm going to kind of set the, the tone, or set the stage as far as for the conversation of that Governance Board. But Sheriff, I think yours has been in place for, what, four or five years, maybe?
Four years.
Okay, so, and that's something that, that when we first put it into place, we've kind of made some tweaks and changes with it, but I think, I think it's, it's working well, so that's kind of where we, where we've ended up. So Julie, with that as a background, I'm going to kind of hand it over to you.
And so, and you said it very well, thank you. So one of the things that, you know, with that thought process in mind was for there to be, basically, two Governance Boards, one for law enforcement, and one for emergency response, i.e. the fire department's EMS, Emergency Management, would participate in two separate boards. And there, there's no problem with working like that, as long as there's some, some understanding, and that they work in the same manner. So we would mimic, potentially mimic the Emergency Response Board after the Sheriff's Board or the Law Enforcement Board, and then, and/or make some changes, so they all follow the same pattern, with the thought that if, if any commissioner's sitting in, or listening in on any of the boards, the structure's going to be the same. For ECOM, that's going to serve on two boards, the, the structure's going to be the same. So any ECOM personnel would know that, how they present, or the voting procedure, or any of the structure to the committee is going to be the same regardless, be it a law enforcement or emergency response board. And then the, the other thought process was perhaps have a technical committee, or a joint committee that would address issues, and I see it being more for technical, i.e. the new CAD system coming down the road, the new, the one Viper radio system, in which you'd have a joint committee of law enforcement and your emergency response, that would work collectively together as a task force or committee that would address these issues, and then report back to their committees, and then, of course, their boards, and then their, their board would report back to you as well. So that's the first thought on something like that. Silence.
Okay, there are any questions?
Any questions? And, and I'm, I've done like a little schematic, to kind of depict that, kind of what it looks like. And one of the things that, that we really didn't think about, that is also dispatched by ECOM, is animal control. So, and that was one that we really didn't have included in either list, and so from talking to the sheriff, I did talk to him a little bit today about animal control, and thought the best fit probably would be under the law enforcement. So if you'll look at that, that's, that's something that's different with, with that law enforcement Governance Board, would just be the addition of the animal control to that side.
And one of the things that we need to keep in mind anytime we do a governance, is to make sure that there's an odd number, so when you're, you're doing a voting, that it's, you can, you cannot have, of course, a standout. So whatever, whatever structure you guys come up with as a final structure, it needs to be an odd number. And, you know, it's, it's like, we could, you know, have 20 people on a board, well, then it becomes problematic, because you're not going to get your two-third majority, potentially half of the time, on, on existing system like that. So just, those are some of the thoughts, too, to keep in mind as we move forward with this.
Well, Julie, we truly appreciate your putting this, these recommendations together, because it's a lot easier to adjust from a known point than it is to create something out of whole cloth. So you got a lot of good conversations started, and as we move towards what this looks like, there's a, sometimes it's easier to understand if you've got, got an org chart, more or less, in front of you. Are you able to put this up on the, for everyone to see?
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were going to have her present her recommendations to us as they were presented, and then come up with these other things. This is totally different.
Okay, well, that's fine.
I'm just saying the recommendations-
She stopped talking, so I assume that was it.
I mean, when I talked to her, she was going to present today her recommendations that she made to us, and then since her email went out Friday, I've had conversations with the sheriff and chiefs, and you, and others, about a different recommendation, and then you guys did this. So I mean, you can proceed whichever way you want to go, but her, her recommendations weren't what's being handed out right now, originally.
Well, I think we can circle back, and you can go through what your original recommendations were, and then how they evolved. I guess that's what you're wanting to get to, is that right?
I mean, I'll let you guys go ahead and explain that, and I can, we can explain how we got to that point. If you want to go ahead and elaborate on that, we can hear that suggestion. Unless there's additional members that you're going to mention, that's not what we last discussed in our conversations.
Well, I don't think we're talking about members yet, we're talking about overall structure, so we haven't gotten there.
Okay, go ahead.
So if that's for me, I didn't quite catch all of that, so someone would ask what you'd like me to do?
I, I think if you can, for everyone's benefit, I think everyone had an opportunity to, to see the recommendations, but if they didn't, if you can sort of go from what you originally recommended, with, which was essentially two different options, and then I think we can discuss how we have arrived at a modification of that to incorporate both of those options essentially into one. And then discuss the composition of the two different boards.
All right, so during the first meeting with the Public Safety Commissioners, at the end of that meeting, we had come up with a Governance Board consisting of the ECOM Director, EMS Director, Emergency Management Director, a sheriff representative, a police representative, full-time fire, a rescue representative, and two volunteer rescue representatives. And like I said, they said, our meeting was on Friday, and, and over the weekend, I'm like, I started thinking about it, going, the problem with a structure like that is that it was, it was, if we looked at it as a whole, it was very heavy on, there was basically five fire representatives, and only two for law enforcement, one for ECOM, and one for EMS, which made it unbalanced. And so what I came back with, you know, and again, the whole idea behind this is to achieve collaboration, cooperation, and communication between all of the agencies. So I regrouped and came back with basically two representatives of each agency, or each discipline, not an agency, so instead of basing it on geographics, we're going to base it on the discipline. So two ECOM representatives, EMS Director, Medical Director, Emergency Management Director, Sheriff, and then a sheriff representative or police representative, full-time fire, and volunteer part-time fire representative. And again, that was just, that was the secondary one that came up with over the weekend, as I thought about this, instead of not thinking about work. And I came back to the, to Jean and Scotty and Beth with this new recommendation. And then that escalated, not escalated, but it, it rolled, and that's what the purpose of these things are, is that, you know, as you talk about these things, you come up with different ideas. And then the sheriff came up with, you know, and I don't disagree, that the sheriff and law enforcement operates very differently than, than emergency response, fire, rescue, EMS. They, they operate very differently. So the, the operational sides of a board like that are very different. And keeping them separate, I think, is an excellent idea, and I wish I would have thought of it. That brings us to the current one. And again, what I will do is, if, if we can get some direction, I can continue with the whole legal, political, whereas, structure of governance recommendations, and trying to make the, if you guys decide to go to the two, make those recommendations and the structure, so they, so they operate similarly, and then discuss what the joint committee would look like, and perhaps some of the rules that it would do. And then that comes back again, and, and we'll come back to the Public Safety Committee with that, and we can review it and make some tweaks on it again, as a pile that would be set up.
Okay, any questions about that development so far? All right.
Yes, sir, I got a question.
Yeah.
The board on this draft, the rescue representative, you got a fire rescue, a standalone rescue squad represented at all, and I think there should be at least one or two of us on the board office.
Let me, let me interject at this point, I guess. After the secondary email came out, and the agendas came out, and the word went out for invitations for today, I heard from several stakeholders, and met with and talked to the sheriff, and several others, and that's where we had the idea to have two separate Governance Boards, and then work on potentially separate operational subcommittees, and then one potential technical committee. And on my, on my design structure that I will recommend is, I had an ECOM Director or Designee, an EMS Director or Designee, the Medical Director, Emergency Management Director or Designee, the Emergency Planner or Fire Marshal. Then I had the Mooresville Fire Department Chief or Designee, Statesville Fire Chief or Designee, standalone rescue, and an alternate member, volunteer fire rescue north, volunteer fire rescue south, volunteer fire rescue central, and each of those would have a alternate to attend the meetings as well. That was 11 total members, so I'm going to call this Option Three. You've, you've heard and seen the email with the first two options, and so Option Three was what I just mentioned, and then we could talk about a wide range of things, as far as these people serving on this, these governance committees have, the law enforcement leave it in place like it is, because the disciplines and the protocols are different. Maybe adding animal control to that, as the manager said, but in my conversations with stakeholders and the sheriffs, and the members that I've talked to, is having the two separate Governance Boards made more sense, because the disciplines are so different. And the, the operations committees of each would be just supporting a lot of different personalities or personnel on those, and maybe, maybe one technical committee that serves both. And then as part of that, you would have a clerk or someone to keep minutes of the meetings, a finance representative from the county, or admin representative, and a legal rep, if necessary, they're non-voting members, but they're always going to be in the meetings, because if this situation recommends funding and finances, it would come back to the Board of Commissioners. So that was, that'll just further that discussion, so you all know, those are my recommendations as a third option for us all to deliberate on and move forward on. I think James and Beth worked on this thing here, but I'm not sure where these members of this Governance Committee plays into that graph right there.
Well, that graph doesn't depict all the members, that's just, those could be potential subcommittees of the Governance Board.
I think that's what was confusing.
So if you have EMS slash medical, then, you know, folks that play with a focus towards that, on that committee, fire rescue, same thing. And before, and the original recommendation had basically three committees, a law enforcement committee, an EMS committee, and a fire rescue committee, plus two other functional committees, technical and, and operations. And so what we would expect is the Emergency Response Governance Board would be made up of, for instance, the 11 positions that you outlined would, would be appropriate. But they would have committees reporting to the Governance Board that would delve into specific issues, whether they were medical-related, which, you know, is going to involve rescue, fire, EMS, and ECOM, and a number, a number of other interested parties. And then fire rescue won't have, won't be exactly the same, but it'll have a lot of the same, you know, participation. Volunteer fire, you know, full-time fire, which is also involved with EMS, I mean it, but they're looking at different issues, you know, whether you're looking at fire calls, whether you're looking at medical calls, they're just in a different bailiwick. So really, there's only a need for perhaps two committees, EMS and fire slash rescue. And then the sheriffs, the law enforcement Governance Boards, we're just suggesting add animal control to that, because there's sworn officers that are supposed to be able to issue warrants, and that's authorized through the certification process that the sheriff's department runs.
I don't think they are sworn.
They're not, they actually partner with the sheriff's office to serve warrants.
Well, they used to be.
Yeah, they're, they're not, they actually work in conjunction with the sheriff's office, which is why they're so closely tied.
Right.
Yeah.
The sheriffs, or law enforcement committee is made up of eight members, but in our discussions, I wanted to make sure that the 11 different positions on here were, give everybody a voting seat at the table. And I, and our hope all along in this, to Julie's point, was to increase and improve the policies and, and training, and all of the various things, we're asking everybody to, to, everybody move to the middle and work together to accomplish the collaboration, cooperation, and communication, and we're investing in the equipment, and all of the things that would help make this possible. And I think that was the confusion, Mr. Chairman, is just, they thought that was your recommended Governance Board.
No, this, this chart just so, just shows the, the different disciplines. It does not show the membership, it shows the disciplines.
I think that was the confusion.
So you may have a couple of members that represent one discipline, and a few members that represent another, but these are just all the different disciplines. There's four represented on each Governance Board.
And for the operations and the technical side, you could have as many as you wanted to work out the things, I think, as far as members of those.
Yeah.
What we want to make sure is that if you have two Governance Boards, that there is a little bit of crossover in, in terms of, you know, well, obviously, ECOM is a common denominator, because they're dispatching both. But in the operational environment, they don't completely operate separately. For instance, if a sheriff's deputy is in pursuit of a drunk driver, and the drunk driver crosses the center line, smashes into another vehicle, you got pin in, you got injured folks, then the sheriff's at the scene, rescue's at the scene, EMS is at the scene, fire's at the scene, everybody's at the scene. And we need to make sure that if normally the sheriff's department works off of the main channel, and not a TAC channel, or the fire's working on TAC, and everybody else is working on TAC, then in that environment, that's an issue that ought to be addressed and harmonized, so that everybody's able to communicate in that particular environment. So we need a technical committee or something that can harmonize, and make sure that one Governance Board isn't slightly moving in this direction, that would create some conflict with how you do business with law enforcement. And, you know, it may not happen very often, but it can happen. So the technical committee should have eyes on both, and then be able to say, well, wait a minute, you know, they do things this way with, with the fire and rescue and EMS, let's make sure that we, we're all able to communicate at the end of the day, based on policy and how we technically do things. I use that as a, just an example, it may not be on point, but that's as close as I could come to sort of describe it.
And sheriff, maybe, maybe we call it, instead of a technical committee, it's considered a joint committee. And it could be done for technical purposes, or the situation you just described, there's a major incident involved everybody, and it's used for debriefing, it's used for addressing an issue that occurred on a, on a major incident. So maybe it's, maybe we're getting stuck on the word "technical," and the joint committee could be a technical or operational committee, depending on the, the current situation.
Well, and if, if one board comes up with, you know, for instance, hey, there's a, a new, you know, communication device or equipment that's out there, you know, we'd like to use that, well, then obviously that, that could impact the law enforcement community, we need to be able to cross-share that information through that joint committee. And I think it could be for technical, or it could be for operational issues, just to make sure that, you know, although we got, you know, two groups pulling the same, you know, stagecoach in the harness, we don't want them out of kilter too much, they're independent, but they are joined at the hip as far as communications goes, so we don't want to create more, you know, we're trying to get away from multiple different ways of doing business that's confusing to dispatchers. We don't want that to sort of slide in there unseen, without being addressed on the front end, as between all the community of, of users. But the whole point is, as Commissioner Hap has alluded to, is to be able to get all the cards on the table, address everyone's concerns, and figure out how to square the circle, and be able to recognize that everyone has their equities, and their, their limitations, and what we would hope for is, like in our planning board, when we, when we have recommendations come from the planning board, when they are unanimous, or they're six to one, or something like that, that's very persuasive to the folks as we make those decisions. If we have a split decision that's very close, we oftentimes, you know, will modify that, or send it back for reconsideration, or relook, because this isn't about, you know, just seeing who can outvote who, it's to share that is, and, and come up with a team approach, so that we can all come away with a win-win, regardless of our seats. And hopefully, you know, the only things that come up to us would be, as you develop shared goals, objectives, or requirements, or changes in process, or if it's going to have a fiscal impact, if we don't have the dollars right there in the budgets as have been approved, then it's going to have to come to us for a budget amendment. And we're going to, if we've got everybody pushing for something, and it's within the ability of the budget to support it, then, you know, you're going to get, you know, a favorable response in all likelihood, unless it's just way out of there, because we have to live within a budget. But, and if it's a, a recommendation that's going to require- But, um, and if it's a, uh, a, a recommendation that's gonna require, uh, personnel changes, or additions, or things that, uh, in order to accommodate that re- request, uh, then that's not only a budgetary issue, but we also have to make sure that, you know, within the department, that all the other things that we're trying to accomplish are being accomplished, that doesn't have a negative impact in some other area. So, um, we'll, you know, this is the kind of thing we'll take on a shakedown cruise, and we'll find out, okay, how, how's this thing work? And, uh, what we want to do is collectively get to the point where, um, you know, uh, if there are issues, or there have been problems with something, that those are quickly identified, evaluated, and that there is action taken, or if action can't be taken to, uh, you know, uh, address whatever the deficiencies are, that, uh, we have a, a, a recommendation that can help us address those deficiencies, if you're not able to do it internally. And it needs to come to us, because there's a resource issue. So, uh, what we want to do is, uh, have you take care of your business, and us not be involved in your business on a, except where you need us to be. Because you're professionals, you all know what you're doing, is delivering the best service to our citizens, and that's what we all have as our ultimate goal. So I appreciate the, uh, the inputs that we've received, because they've been very, rational, reasonable, uh, concerns, and, and, you know, you don't know what you don't know. That's part of this whole process, is to get everybody to be able to understand the, uh, perspectives of everybody else that's involved in the system, and collectively work towards this common goal. And I appreciate the, uh, candid input that we've gotten so far from multiple sources. So, uh, Scotty, do you have anything?
You know, one thing y'all need to realize, we're not here to tell you how to do your job, because we don't know how to do it. I mean, we've got a job to do, but we, we have to have your input, but we gotta make this simple. The simpler it is, common sense it is, it'll all work in the end. And if we keep on adding hundreds of people to boards, we're gonna never get to the bottom. We've gotta get this as simple as we can to, to amount of people that can make something happen, where James says, "We don't need to tell y'all how to do your job, because we don't know how to do it." But if y'all can get the right group of people together, and if you need anything, we're here to, to take care of those needs. But I can tell you right quick, you get 100 people out there trying to get decisions out of them, you're never gonna get anything done. So we've gotta get this down to a, a certain amount of people, where we can make this work.
I just wanted, I just wanted, I didn't finish earlier, if you wanna go ahead. I just was gonna say, in our discussions, we talked about, because I think experience is gonna matter, the county departments' representatives may change, people retiring, et cetera. As far as the standalone rescues and, um, volunteer agencies that have peop- people on there and alternates, from the conversations I've had with some of you and others, is just, you could either draw it out of a hat and have a primary rep, or a alternate that could serve two years and change, or you could vote, the north departments could vote on a north rep and an alternate, but if you could not make an agreement, or had a tie in the vote with who was voting, then you could draw it out of a hat, the chiefs and/or whoever you wanted to serve on those. Just throwing ideas out there from my perspective, is how you decide who these people are, and, and they would serve two years and/or rotate off. And then I think we could sit back down, once this is up and running, and debrief after a year, and see what's working and what's not. And, and, because I'm, I'm sure the first year will be the busiest, uh, implementing changes and protocols and all that, but those are just ideas I had from the two separate, um, Governance Review Boards, from my perspective, and how to appoint or select people to serve on those. And, just as an idea. And then, the structure of it was mentioned in her email, as to the structure of it. And, um, like Scotty said, you know, our goal is to put you at the table, to professionally come up with ideas that, that will make the job easier for our dispatchers, and, and narrow the protocols that they have to go by, and get everybody on the same page, work on training. And, as part of these, not in this discussion, but we talked about, um, from my perspective, leaving Active 911 alone, you guys change it, tweak it as you want to, from my perspective. And, and I'd like to see, um, the Pulse Point that we were talking about previously put back in action immediately, or any other phone app that might work, unless, ask the manager and Candy to get that up and running, and test drive it with several people, however you'd wanna do it, to make sure, see how that works. Because that was only to satisfy the public and/or, uh, media, or people that don't really need access to CAD notes. And so, to put that out there. But those were my recommendations, and I appreciate, and I know Julie does, all of the feedback all of you gave her during this whole process. And I appreciate the help and communication you've all worked with me on. And like Scotty said, and James, our goal is to make things better, and get all of you to work together, and to keep you all safe at the end of the day, and make sure those, the citizens are getting the service, uh, that they expect.
That's a lot to digest all at one time. Biggest concerns are making sure that we, it's a lot of people, and, and very important people with your recommendations on that. The conversations that are gonna happen amongst these Governance Boards-
That's a, those are committees, if that's what you're looking at.
All of the people that are gonna be having, whether it be Governance Boards or committees, are gonna impact daily lives and jobs, and it's, to me, the one of the most important decisions that have to be made, is who the representatives are. And how that is determined needs to be someone who truly has a heart and a passion for saving lives, and working on a team. I believe that can happen. I believe that these people that will serve Aradale County will do what needs to be done. I'm curious about our next steps, too. I mean, we've got a lot going here. And it's critical what we do next, and how we do that next. So, I want to reassure those who are part of this, and on the receiving end of it, has a maximum, most positive outcome from every conversation, from Winborn to Commissioner to Manager. This is important. This is critical, these next steps. So we just all need to be in on having open conversations and, and problem solving. So it all goes back to my concern of, of, of the human, the people part of it. So I just-
That's why I think, you know, we invested $200,000 with this company to be a, they're experts to give us some ideas. Agree with your, uh, comments, but that's why I tried to get everybody on the Fire, EMS Governance Review, uh, from our county departments to the stakeholders, a seat at the table to make decisions, so they have confidence in the investments we're making, the, uh, protocols that we're doing. I think that helps our ECOM employees, that if we can narrow the protocols and get everybody to make their job more streamlined, to where they're not having to learn multiple different protocols, that's less, that's a potential for less mistakes that somebody could make. We've made investments in, you know, capital building, equipment, uh, personnel, if we can assist Candy and, and all of these people to getting the appropriate staff, training, get them at the table to work together, instead of working against one another. I would just say, anybody serving on this board, if they come from any of these departments, I think they love their communities, and they love each other, and they love our country. Most of these people, some are paid, but the, at least I can say, all of these people, I did it for 32 years, you don't do it for the pay and the benefits. So I think all of them have the right motives and intentions. At the end of the day, when there is a complaint or a mistake made, we can't take it personal, because a, a, a chief calls in, or someone calls in, that's concerned, because, you know, the family's on the side of the road, or a dead one, a dead family member's laying there for three hours, because, you know, it's taken that long to get a medical, uh, examiner representative there, so they can move the body. I think what we have to do is, from our perspective, is to try to put these things in place, put the people at the table, as Scotty said, to let them make decisions to govern themselves. If they can come up with ideas that has a, a better process, our job is to help fund it, and make sure they have the tools they need to do the job, the, uh, pay to retain and recruit these individuals, and to make sure Beth can do what she needs to do from her seat, to get them the full-time, at least county departments, trained to do what they're doing. And one of the recommendations I was gonna bring later, that we've talked about, is consider, uh, paying the volunteer members up to 40 hours a year, 30, they're mandated 36 hours of training, and then we would ask that they do four hours of joint training with ECOM annually. Law enforcement does annual training, they do annual training, so they can go over and, and have joint training together to, to go back over how to use the equipment, pagers, radios, how to, the dispatchers, what, from their perspective, the challenges, that people that's never worked in dispatch, may not realize, the dispatchers are going off of the caller's information through all kinds of distractions, depending on where they are. There's a lot of factors that I hope the Governance Board, if a complaint comes in to Candy and, and her people, or there may be a complaint from somebody else to a, a volunteer agency, about something that, that's not being done, that they can sit down like a jury, and deliberate the facts, and be professional, keep the personalities out of it, and work out the best protocol, training resolution, to keep them safe and provide the service for the community. And I know all of these people, in-house and outside, their hearts are in the right place, or they wouldn't be doing it, because they're damn sure not doing it for the pay. And so, our citizens are getting a bang for the buck, and it's, it's tough on best position, and I'll say, ECOM and all of these ladies and gentlemen that serve us in any capacity, they're doing it because they love their community, because I don't care if they're paid full-time people, it ain't enough. To run and burning buildings, and being a traffic accident on the interstate if you're EMS or whomever, working holidays in inclement weather, getting shot at, um, I did it. Our job is to try to get you to where you're in a better place, however that happens. To James's point, it, it, what, what was your point about test driving, or something about a military?
Shakedown.
Shakedown crew. As far as the, the apps, phone apps, and different things that we'll ask Beth and Candy to work on, that's to satisfy an itch, and, and to, to provide a service, and hopefully this right here will give us an avenue that you guys can use to resolve your issues, so there's not animosity from any of you towards ECOM director or employees, because I know mistakes that are made on either side. I'll say that there, I can't see anybody making those mistakes intentionally. We just want to make sure they're not repeated, and we're all working together to make sure that doesn't happen. And to your point, I think that's our goal.
Marvin, do you have any comments?
I hear, I've heard enough.
Okay. Well, let me ask, uh, generally, you know, we, we were, we're trying to work through this structure, and it's, it's general at this point, but hearing what you've heard, are we on the right track? If you can just raise your hand, if you think, okay, we need to move forward, establish the Governance Boards, the two that are out there, I mean, the sheriff already has his pretty much up and running, and been running, um, and, uh, be able to put some meat on the bones as far as, you know, the specific breakout of committees, and who ought to be on them, uh, feeding into the Governance Board, uh, particularly on the emergency response side. And I think that, uh, you know, the, the number of 11, uh, that Commissioner Hough outlined, I think is, is a good number. It's not too large, it's not, but it gets, gets, uh, appropriate representation of the stakeholders involved. So, um, if, if you want us to proceed, if, if you can be part of that, and feel that we need to plow forward, if you can just raise your hand. Okay. There's a majority. Those that, that don't want to move forward, raise your hand. Okay, nobody. Okay, so, what we want to do is be able to give our staffs some direction, to be able to coordinate some meetings, uh, with whoever's gonna be appropriate to, let's, let, and review things with our council, uh, as well as, uh, you know, uh, the staff that work these issues day-to-day and in the field. And during the next two weeks, flesh this thing out, so that we can, uh, then formally, I think, adopt it. Right now, I think we can give a, you know, go-forward, as well as on the Pulse Point piece, which is, doesn't directly have, that, that can be done without whatever we're doing here. Just be evaluating, do beta-test it, and-
We have to buy it first. So, and I, I was told to put everything on hold, so you don't, you don't want to wait till the Governance Board is established to do that?
Well, well, I think that, uh-
Once, once we buy it, I mean, we, we own it.
Well, let's, you know, if there's some other options out there, other than Pulse Point, we need to know what those are. If there's not, I think we can move forward with Pulse Point. If, if there are some other options out there that have additional features or capabilities that Pulse Point doesn't have, uh, please share those with, uh, County Manager, uh, so she can, uh-
The intent for Pulse Point was recommended to allow citizens to put that on their phone, or the media, if they want to follow the ECOM situations, or if you had potential family members or people want to know what you're doing, that don't need access to CAD notes, whether or not, we'll debate whether they were, that's legal or not legal. Huh? Active 911 stays, from my perspective, I don't, I never intended for Active 911 to be impacted at all. Julie, back me up and agree, in our discussions, Active 911 discussions was to make sure the people getting CAD notes couldn't, can't see them and get them, and to make sure we get pagers and/or radios to all members, so if they go to TAC, they can hear updates and cancellations, without having to read physically notes off of your phone or any device while you're driving. That was our only discussions about Active 911. And so, from my point, you guys pay for that, and so if you change your uses of it, from my perspective, that should be your decision.
Yes, the question I have, that's maybe just me, because I'm a little bit confused, because we've seen so many different layouts tonight, is before we move forward, I would like to know, is your idea talk about the Governance Board, or the committee, or what are we, it'd be nice to have a track of saying, this is how we're going forward, and this is what it's gonna look like, because we've heard so many different options tonight, and I'm not really sure I know exactly what we're talking about.
Basically, the Sheriff's, um, uh, Governance Board, or Review Governance, whatever, would stay the same, other than adding animal control to that. The ECOM, Fire, EMS, Rescue Governance Review will be made up of the 11 members that I mentioned, and their, and/or their alternates. These recommendations would be committees that each Governance Board could send things to, to work out, hash out the details and any other information they may need that may take time, and report back to the voting Governance Boards.
That's not what the Governance Board is, though, they got represented from all the agencies, they're not even need those separate committees reporting to that, no. So when you got the president to the-
Well, the people on the Governance Board that are voting members may not be, um- Well, the people on the governance board that are voting members may not be disciplined in technical things or may not be, you know, it gives you the opportunity through operations or technical to find out the details, the legalities, cost of things, if, you know, where it comes into play.
We're switching to now kind of the way the sheriff's has set up, the email we got kind of had what she sent, so we don't really know how his is.
May I make a suggestion? May I make a suggestion that, that what we need direction on tonight is to create, is to keep the law enforcement governance board and add animal control to it, and then to mirror that with an emergency response governance board, and to get those sample documents, let Julie go and work, because she said that there were some things that needed to be updated and that needed to be modified in those draft documents. Let's get those draft documents, see exactly how those work, what the structured duties, responsibilities, what all of that is, and then you can come back and make sure that that's what you want, and then you can populate it at that point. But let's, let's, let her finish the actual documents and how it works and how it functions and what it does, and then you can go, once you look at that, you can look at that and say, yes, that's what we want that board to do, now let's go and populate it.
If you populate it that way, but I'm just saying the population of it was the 11 people and alternates that I mentioned, and then she would mirror an MOU similar that's with the sheriff and those agencies. And as far as her formal agreements, I guess she would have to include all the various agencies that are going to sign on to that, and then in the fire and rescue contracts, we would have to have in that wording that they've agreed to the structure of a governance board and potentially have agreed to, I guess the MOU serves for that too, that they agreed to go by those, to resolve any issues and complaints, to go by the protocol spelled out in Julie's documents. But I'm saying the ECOM, Fire, EMS, Rescue Governance Review Board would be made up of these, I mean, as far as mirroring the MOU to, similar to the sheriff's, what he says is different?
Well, what I'm saying is different is because one of the things that, and Julie, I feel like I'm speaking for you, but one of the things that she talked about is, she's going to have to draft one for emergency response.
Right.
Similar to what law enforcement has, and then update the law enforcement, because there's some updating that needs to occur with that one.
For sure.
So I think it would be prudent to actually look and see what that document is and what the roles and responsibilities are, what that board is intended to do, and then once you do that, then you can work through actually populating the representatives on that board. But I think you need to see what that, what that document is that's going to create that board and the roles and responsibilities that board will have.
We know the roles and responsibilities, they're going to be to resolve these issues and complaints.
Yeah, I think we know what we want the board to do. I think what we've striven for here is a, an appropriate cross-section and representation of the stakeholders involved, and I think we can nail that down with some specificity. Then in terms of the composition of the committees that would report to that board, you know, that's based on the functions and how you divvy those up, and the technical or the joint committee, as we can call it, flesh that out in terms of what that ought to look like, and in this process, come up with a first cut, share that with everybody, get some feedback, you know, move back and forth, it's just going to have to be a back-and-forth kind of thing, so, you know, read your emails, because we want to drive this to a point where, okay, we've got a document that we can approve and sign, that passes legal muster, and is, is the, it's not going to be perfect, it's going to, like, you know, when the Navy orders a ship, it's built at the shipyard based on drawings and plans and specifications, and then they go out on the shakedown crews and the crews come back and say, oh, okay, these are all the problems we ran into, and then they have to get fixed. And so we'll, we'll work through that as we go through this shakedown cruise. But in the same time, it's like the old saying, you know, you're building a plane while you're flying it, you're still out there doing your jobs, doing what you do. So we'll adjust accordingly. I expect by the time you lay in all the, the changes and the, that have been recommended by Winborn from the radio side to the operations side, which is resulting in us hiring new telecommunicators so they can get, you know, handle the load as well as be able to be specially trained in some instances for different stakeholders, and getting a training regimen that, that really does, you know, I'd like to have one of the first things, the joint, or this response committee, or board rather, look at is this, this training issue, and, you know, if you've got 36 hours of training and we add four hours of that, of common ECOM-type training, then, you know, will it be helpful to your volunteer retention and recruitment to be able to pay folks for that training? And if it is, okay, what's the cost of that? That's going to require us to take some kind of action on the budget, but it's something that I think that can enhance recruiting and retention and getting trained folks in the field that are fully certified. So, but we need the govern, that's something we don't want to try to micromanage from our level, we want to have it looked at by you guys and figure it out and then come up with a recommendation. But let's go ahead and just, you know, start with a known point. We've had fairly specific suggestion as far as the composition of the board, and I think it gives all of the stakeholders a seat at the table. And as I said, it's not about winning votes or losing votes, it's about coming up with, you know, a commonly agreed upon pathway ahead that we can all live with and is win-win. So if we need to go ahead and adopt, let's say, the initial organizational structure in terms of the composition of the Emergency Response Governance Board and the Law Enforcement Governance Board, the only change in the law enforcement being the addition of the animal control rep, and I think that can give you some direction and it lets you guys know, okay, these are the folks going to be sitting at the table, and you all need to determine who those folks are going to be. And we're not telling you how to do that, you need to work that out yourselves. But we'll, you know, we talked about a south, a central, and a northern zone, we'll get you the definition of those, I think is pretty...
Can you go back and list the members?
I did, ECOM director or designate, EMS director or designate, medical director, emergency management director or designate, fire marshal, or, or either the fire marshal or the emergency planner. I guess both of those work for Kent, they could be alternate, either one, one or the both, or I'll say fire marshal. The mortar fire chief or designate from mortar fire, stateful fire chief or designate, standalone rescue representative and alternate, volunteer fire and rescue north and alternate, volunteer fire and rescue south and alternate, volunteer fire and rescue central and alternate. And then you would work on the MOU to that, and then you would, also, we would need a clerk for the minutes, a finance representative, the manager's officer, the manager and a representative for non-voting members to be on this board and at all these meetings, but those were the recommendations that I had.
And to add to that, I would ask the Chiefs Association president to coordinate defining south, central, and north, and how you're going to select those members, you know, and then get that back to us. And then we'll just go back and forth and with a goal of a finished product by our next meeting that we can adopt in full.
By our next meeting that we can adopt in full.
So is that enough of a direction there? Shall we have a vote? Is there a motion to proceed accordingly?
I'll make that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Marvin? Did you hear? Oh, you did?
I don't think you did.
Oh, you said aye.
Okay. We are unanimous. Thank you all for being here, and I appreciate the hard work that all you do every day, and I look forward to the product that we're going to come out with, because at the end, at the end of this journey, which started, like I said, a couple of weeks ago, started really in 2015 as we evaluated the physical plant and a lot of things that we needed to work on, you know, we've layered in a lot of different things over the years, and this is the culminating effort when we put it all together. And so I thank you for being joined at the hip with us in that process.
Before we move off this topic, can we go back to the Pulse Point?
Yeah.
The board wants to move forward with Pulse Point and not wait for the governance board.
Yes.
That's correct.
Different from my direction, so I just want to make sure we're clear.
Do we have a price?
Um, I can get that. But, I mean, I just want to make sure that that is one of the recommendations the board wants me to move forward with now.
Want you to move forward and evaluate, you know, we don't have to buy it right away, we just need to evaluate the cost and capabilities.
I think we had it purchase-ordered, and then I put a hold on everything when I was told to stop, so, I think we got it POed.
From my perspective, proceed with that, because that doesn't stop anything, and that was for the purpose I mentioned, it had nothing to do with the fire department specifically or rescues.
And what was the cost? Do you remember?
I don't. I'll have to, I don't have it off the top of my head, but when I was told to pull up, I pulled up on everything, so I'll have to get back and see what that cost was.
Okay, well, just continue to march on Pulse Point, and as I said, it doesn't impact your Active 911.
And I just, I just want to reference the 911. The night, the recommendation from the Winborn study was not to do away with 911, Active 911. However, the recommendation from the Winborn study was to use Active 911 and provide nature code, address, cross streets, and directions if available, and then to turn around and invest funds in pagers, in radios, which we've already done, and the computer terminals to get all the detailed notes, and that's why we talked in-depth about the pagers, because there's an audio function with the pagers, so they don't have to read it, it will read it to them. So I want to make sure that everybody understands, that was not Beth's idea, that is a direction from the Winborn study, which was on page 13 of the second recommendation. And I want to make sure, and Julie, if you're still on the phone, I mean, I seem to be getting a lot of hits over that, that was a direct recommendation from the Winborn study.
Well, I think what no one really appreciated was the other internal functions that Active 911 provide to departments.
And they can definitely continue to use Active 911. We don't pay for that, we're not doing away with it.
That's what I'm saying, the CAD notes shouldn't change, nothing should change from my perspective for Active 911 at all.
And it was going to be replaced through pagers, through radios, and through computer terminals. That was the recommendation.
Well, I think from this point, what I'm trying to say is, the pager, from my perspective, if we need to make a vote, we can do that, to not change how Active 911 is being used right now, but to provide pagers and radios so people can hear verbally the cancellations and updates. We're not going to put, we're not going to say verbally the notes that's on the CAD, for whatever that reason was. Julie, you told me when I talked to you that you never recommended changing the use of Active 911, other than what I mentioned. You want to elaborate?
The only, the only change that was recommended was the CAD notes because of HIPAA and other legal requirements, and, and there's, and, you know, the problem with, and whether it's just the current CAD system or future CAD systems, it's all or none on the CAD notes, you can't just say, just send this, it's all or none on the CAD notes. So that was the only recommendation that was put forth, it wasn't to stop using Active 911, it was to look at that and replace it with the, again, the pagers and everything else where the information will be passed along.
Okay, so basically my thing is just to leave it alone, keep using CAD like it is, the notes like it is, if the fire departments want to change that, they can, just implement the pagers and radios so you can hear verbal cancellations and updates, so the first responders do not have to read updates and cancellations while they're driving. That's the clarification.
All right. Well, let's just put that in the record as a motion, if you will, so that we'll proceed, you'll have full authority to proceed with Pulse Point. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, thank you. If you want to hang around, you're welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch on your emails.
And thank you, everyone, this is Julie from Winborn, and I will be on any note.
Thank you, Julie, you've been a real trooper and been an incredible resource for us to be able to figure out the way ahead.
Not a problem, my pleasure. I will, I'm going to try to make a commitment to get you something by the end of the week with the new governance recommendation structure.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said, that'll be my goal, is to try to get it to you by the end of the week.
Thank you much.
Have a great day.
End of the week by the time she would have.
Yes, that's what she said, okay.
Just upgraded MOU and whatever.
We can proceed to the next item.
All right. Next item is requests from Adal Sakswell Schools for funding assistance to expedite the installation of a new security system for the schools and to reestablish the safety and security annual budget, and Mr. Tim Ivey's here to make this request.
General Mallory, members of the commissioners, Ms. Moll, thank you very much. Dr. James sends his regrets, he did, when he asked me initially to come to this presentation, he did not realize that he was going to be pinning some CNA students tonight and was asked to speak at that event, and so he did ask me to come in his place, so thank you very much. I also want to thank you guys very much for your continued support for our school district. I greatly appreciate the ability for you to allow us to enter into our lease purchase so that we could begin upgrades to our security system in the school district. Our initial plan with implementing that security system was that we would essentially do that in-house, meaning that we would take members of our tech department, some of our maintenance department, and work through that process over about a year and a half. With the recent events happening, we noticed that we may want to try to expedite that, and so are certainly wanting to seek some additional funding. Now, I did want to clarify that part of our agreement with the company that we did enter into the lease purchase was that they would provide us some additional assistance, and they are going to help us. That is essentially two individuals, so they're giving us about $130,000, and it gives us two individuals to help pull wire, start the installation for about 60 days. To be able to do a school system our size and to get the infrastructure put in so that we can move forward a lot quicker, we would need a much larger team. We estimate that to be around $400,000, meaning six additional people for about 60 days to try to push through, pull all the needed cabling and wire for that, and that is internet cabling, so a lot of people would ask that it might be electrical cabling, it's not, it's just, with IP-based systems, you have to have switches and internet cable in certain places for those. So we would like to discuss that, and certainly... So we would like to discuss that and certainly answer any questions that you guys may have about the security system or our request. We'd also like to possibly talk again about reestablishing some form of security fund that is done yearly for schools. And the reason I say that is in conversations I've had with Ms. Moll, they did include that in our price. So I don't want to act like that the, we had an agreement at one point in time where the schools had asked for some funding. And then it is now rolled into our capital budget. So I don't want to essentially say that we're not receiving any funding for security. But I think that it is essential from what we see with school safety and safety from all of our community, that if it's not always something there and designated to having to spend on security, then we may run into a situation where it falls to the wayside. And I just don't want to create a system that leaves security of our schools in a jeopardizing spot, a place where somebody that may be the predecessor after me or even after Dr. James or anybody else doesn't have that urgency to try to always reevaluate school security and make that something that we put on the forefront. And that's really the premise behind asking for us to come up with a way that since our funding source comes from you guys, that it does get established in that way, whether that's a pull off of our capital and it's pulled into a certain account and says that's what it's designated for, or if that's something that we need to establish from our side with our Board of Education, that's fine. I can go about it at that way, too. But I do think it's important for us to keep safety at the forefront of conversations, especially with what we're seeing across our nation in public places, including our schools.
And in our, in our conversation, just for you guys to know, what he's alluding to is, is taking a portion, instead of additional funding, taking a portion of the capital and put it into a restricted safety and security line item that we give each of the systems so that it could be, it could accumulate and build up for these type of things. And it would be restrictive for the boards because like right now, if there's either a capital shortage or something happens, we, because we pay for capital, typically get the blame that it wasn't funded. So I think what Tim is saying is if we can consider, not this year, but in our next year's budget retreats, consider going back to a safety and security line item that we take a portion of their capital formula to put into that. So it's restricted to safety, security and whatever capacity, whether that's gate guards, fencing, hardening of targets, camera systems, whatever that looks like, they could use it for any safety and security purposes. And all of this resurfaced after the Texas incident. You know, people calling, want to know our schools, how many of, are they, are the targets hardened and safe and secure? There are some, to his point, that are not where they want them to be. And if we can help with this funding request, my request if to support it would be prefaced from the point of talking to the House Representative Senator Sawyer, there may be some security monies coming available later, that if they could get that and it specified for safety and security, this could be paid back to us if they get any kind of grant funding that's specified for safety and security. But what this would do would enable them to do these things over the summer months before next year's school starts. That's what, I think that's his main request because he would have to have the contracted labor to get that done.
Yes, that's essentially what we're asking for. And I do want to make sure that you guys, I think then the presentations that I provided to you before, you know, we are working on trying to create cycles, predictable replacement times for our products and to be able to have, when we add in something, it has a defined time period, like a 10-year warranty, where we know what the terms are between that so that we don't have to have it where it's an unpredictable situation where we're having to continue to come and say, we might need some extra funding. I would rather us be way farther ahead of that. I mean, we're very far into our 10-year plan for our entire school system, which is a massive number of buildings and pieces of equipment, and security is part of that along with everything else. So, you know, in this situation, it is more based off of the requests that we have had from parents to asking questions about how fast will some of these things be put into place. And even though with the previous security money, we have made great strides in moving toward where we want to be as a school district, we still just have some areas that we feel like, based off what we've learned from the recent situation in Texas, that there are some areas that we feel like we would be able to shore up this summer and then continue on. We won't be able to do the whole system with the camera replacement all during the summer, but making sure that we get some of those key components that need to be put in place then, that's where we would be requesting the assistance. And of course, if we do receive grants, I think it would only be right that we would be able to repay that money.
So the additional $400,000 to $500,000, is this just to accelerate what, in other words, it's a cash flow issue?
Some manpower.
And you're just taking funds that would have been spent during the second year, moving them up? And, you know, you said they, they provided two individuals to string wire for $130,000. I presume that was over a two-year period. So instead of having two guys for two years, you're going to have six guys for four months or whatever. But that's just a cash flow issue? Are you talking that you need the additional 400 to 500 to just simply accelerate that, that that's not adding to the cost of the contract?
No.
Or are you saying that there's 400 to $500,000 higher bill on top of the contract over a two-year period to just get it accelerated? Can you explain?
Absolutely. The, the $400,000 request is solely for manpower to be able to subcontract out, to have some contractors come in and pull all the infrastructure so that we can then go right behind them and install those key components before school starts. It doesn't add anything to the actual contract that we have with them. The lease purchase does not change. All the equipment is actually being shipped now and will all be here. It just takes, because of the number of school sites, it takes quite a long time to get all of that switched over and installed. So our estimate with our current employees would have been a year and a half. What we were asking is for additional manpower help to subcontract out for the summer months. So it would give us a team that we could bring in this summer that could work much faster than our crew to go through the schools, to put in those key components and have it set up. So then we would be able to come behind them and install the cameras, the access controls, the guest check-in systems and those things that would be needed. So it's really, it's really a manpower request.
Explain the difference also in the quality of the system you're talking about is being able to hear sound in sight. You know, instead of some of the old systems, you can only have a picture with no sound.
Sure. So the security system that we're actually installing, instead of being a digital system, which makes it all motion, so you have to have motion for the cameras to actually activate. These are continuous, you know, continuously running cameras, they're 4K, they do zoom in, they do have sound. They work collectively with the access control system, so you can actually see if somebody's at a door needing to get in. You can buzz them in remotely from a mobile device like your telephone if needed to be. It actually monitors the schools as well so they can actually see if situations going on and instead of it having to wait, go to another party and then hope that that party connects somebody with the schools before they actually call out for an emergency, they actually see the situation, can monitor the cameras and then make the alerts at that time. So it's quite more advanced. The check-in system actually allows you to search for people on campus based off if they check in, you can ask where they go. It recognizes where they go. It will tell you all sorts of things about things. I mean, an example that they've given us, which we've actually had them demo, is you can say, where's everybody with a red hoodie? That's a pretty common thing on a, a school thing. And then it shows you an interactive map of the campus and where all the individuals last hit the camera with a red hoodie. So if you were trying to narrow down your search to a person with a red hoodie, you could actually find them much quicker than what you were able to before. But again, this is not for adding to the system. The school district has already made a allocation for the next five years out of our capital funds that you guys have provided us to make the investment in to the security system. This is really just to be able to try to get enough manpower to install the parts we need to over the next two summer months, July and August.
So I believe we can, so it's an additional 400 on top of what's already been allocated. In other words, the, it's, it's not just a cash flow issue, it's, it's on top of the, the funds that have already been approved for the contract because you're going to use school personnel to do a lot of this over a two-year period. You're accelerating that through the use of subcontractors. So it's not like you, the contract, the, the vendor who's doing this work is just accelerating everything and is wanting the money upfront to cover their costs and then you'll recoup it on the back end, not having to pay.
I think they were doing all the installations anyway, over a year and a half, internal. There was no external installers.
That's correct. We, we had never had any. The company does not actually do the install at all. So we, as part of our agreement with them, the supplier that we purchased it from agreed to provide us assistance and they said they would send us two guys to help with installation as part of their, the agreement. We made a partnership agreement with them, like the school district calls them golden opportunities partners. And what happens is in exchange, they're able to utilize at some point, the school district to show other people who might be interested in purchasing their product, how it works and what it looks like with our agreement of when they would be able to come and see it. So that was part of that. So there, this has nothing to do with adding any to the price. It's not purchasing any more equipment. It essentially is the school district's request to be able to get subcontractors, their local subcontractors in our community, to be able to help us with the installation.
Over the summer.
Yes, sir. Just to do it in two months. And we, we estimated it would take us a year and a half with our personnel to do the installation ourselves.
Okay. Are they going to, you know, the company's committed basically $130,000 worth of labor, but that was over how long of a period?
That's however long we want to use it. We've actually contacted them already to ask if their two individuals could start next week if possible. And so they're waiting to get back from them. So it's however we would use it. If we want them for 60 days, we can pick when those 60 days would be.
I mean, from my perspective, I think we've got several options. We can do nothing. We could treat it as a loan and take the 400 to 500 back out, out of capital over the next year or two. And/or if they get security funding from the state, they could pay it back all at once, or we could just allocate to help.
The labor you are going to use over the next two years are not going to be used now. So that money you were going to pay over the next two years to those labors, we're just giving you that money upfront to.
That's in-house people. That's fully salaried already.
What I call sweat equity.
Right. I'm just saying, they're going to work them the same summer, they just, they just would be doing other duties after the installation of the summer instead of over the next year and a half.
Right.
In essence, it adds to the cost of the contract.
It does. It does to expedite it, yeah, for labor. It does to expedite it because he's using outside labor to get it done.
Right.
Unless, unless you, you know, your guys didn't do anything for the next two years, you know, then it wouldn't be extra cost.
One thing is we haven't hired anybody extra to add security systems.
Right.
So it's the same individuals and just so you know, we have two individuals right now who do our security system for our entire school district. And then we were actually going to take our tech department, which those are the guys who fix your MacBooks, and since this is IP-based stuff, they were actually going to be the ones who helped us install this. We were going to train them on what they needed to do because they're used to pulling internet cable for access points. So that part is a similarity in their job. And what we did was to be able to take on the whole district over, you know, an update, we looked at each department and determined what skills did they have that were similar to what we would hire a subcontractor for.
But you were going to have to pay them to do that.
So we, those individuals who already worked for us would have to do that work anyway because they're already on the clock. I mean, they're, they're going to have duties whether this is happening or not. They all have, you know, work that they'll be doing. So we're just requesting that we be able to, we've got two different companies that are local, that are able to help us out, that have in the past when we've had to do something, able to send in individuals that said they were free. And that's where we came up with those funds because I received a phone call recently after the situation happened in Texas and was just asked, how fast can you install this? And my response was, it's going to take me a year and a half to get it installed. And then the next question was, how would we expedite it? And I was asked to get a quote and next, you know, through several different conversations, ended up in front of you guys with this request.
It's kind of like, I look at it like Beth uses our facilities people to do in-house work to save total cost, I think, of a job, but that means they may not be able to get to other things as quick, so.
Well, time is money. And so if you're, if you had baked into the total cost having it done in-house and now you're doing it subcontracting, it's going to cost more money. Those guys are freed up to do other things that otherwise, so it's added to the cost of the contract, basically. You know, we, we already proved that budget based on that expectation. The rationale for accelerating it can't be denied relative to the events that we've seen. And, you know, if you have the ability to do that, then we ought to do that, in my view. But we do have a budget process and we have expectations of, you know, when it said, we're told this is going to cost this much, it's not like a month later, it's going to cost half a million dollars more. So what we would expect, I would expect, and y'all can make a decision, but is to recoup those funds through any number of ways. It could be, you know, when we basically shore up our sales tax revenues, if the revenues come in greater than what we anticipate, and those would normally be distributed to the schools and for capital that we dedicated to this, what we front. Likewise, if you, you know, any funds that you get relative to a grant, we can, you know, balance the books that way. And if it has to be next year, just in terms of some other, I'll leave it to this board to figure out any other ways to, you know, recoup that. But I just think on a matter of principle, this is, you know, we need to stick to what we've been told and, and although there are certainly exigent circumstances that would justify exactly what you're doing, but you're getting a savings from using your people on different things that they otherwise wouldn't be available for. So at the end of the day, it's a wash for everybody or should be. You know, that's my perspective. I'm, you know, I'm not making a motion if someone wants to make a motion. I will say on the safety and security budget, we, we've been to this rodeo before and it's, I have no inclination to go through that ring-dang-do again. That safety and security budget was established for the express purpose of addressing not only capital needs, but ongoing operational needs in terms of SROs. It was established with the clear understanding that while there were some things that we needed to do over a three-year time horizon, that anything beyond that would need to be funded through a funding stream. And as part of that process, we put before the voters a quarter cent, half cent?
Quarter cent.
Quarter cent sales tax option to be, you know, dedicated to safety and security and some portion up to a quarter for general purposes. And at the end of the day, the interested parties could not get their act together in terms of support for that, both in terms of, you know, the, the school systems at large as well as the law enforcement. large, as well as the law enforcement. So when there's a desire on the part of folks to advocate for some other stream, to support something specific like a safety and security budget, then, well, certainly, I'm sure this board would entertain putting that before the voters and expect everyone to put their shoulder to the wheel and advocate for it if they're going to be the beneficiary of it. Otherwise, I think safety and security is, as you've described, can be set apart internal to the school's budget and you can rope those, you know, put those funds in a proverbial lockbox and then access them when you think is prudent and necessary to do so. Because, you know, the overall budget is what it is. And, and that's the school board's prerogative to determine how to allocate that. So that being said, I'd invite any other comment, because I don't, that's just my personal opinion.
I just, my suggestion was going to be to, to fund up to the 500,000. But if there was no safety, security money made available, grant funding, we could take it out of their capital in next year's budget to recoup that revenue unless there's some other agreement made in between. But instead of adding additional money to their budget, treat it as a, a front-load loan kind of against their capital. And it could come out of next year's capital, short of some other revenue stream paying it back in between now and then.
Or shoring it up.
Either that or table it and let him go back to his board and his superintendent and tell him our thoughts on it and it, do we need to front-load something or do they, and take it out of their capital next year? Or are they just requesting additional funding to satisfy the need now because of the circumstances?
I believe that they're asking for additional funding to satisfy the need now. But I mean, I'm certainly at whatever direction you guys are able to provide and will do what you guys recommend. I mean, ultimately, it is a request and we certainly know that we want to be good stewards to the taxpayer dollars. And we also know that you guys see the overall larger budget picture, so we want to be respectful of that. So in, in whatever recommendation, whatever you guys give us, we will certainly take that back. And if there's a situation where we need to recoup that back to the county, we certainly will work through that with you. We want to continue to be good partners with you guys as we work together to try to do what's best for our community.
I'm curious where you stand, Ms. Moll.
I'd like, yes, more comments on the recommendations here to explain a little more the annual shore-up, the payment with that. How is that different from or similar to?
They've, at least purchased, is what they entered.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you talking about the recommendation that I had in there about the annual shore-up? Typically, what we do every year is we go back, because we budget their capital based on what we anticipate with sales tax.
Right.
And then at the end of the year, we go back and we look and we see what we actually collected in sales tax. And that difference, we give them an additional payment. And we kind of, we call it a shore-up payment because, you know, we're budgeting, we're, excuse me, we're, we're budgeting based on projections and what we saw the past two years, we didn't think sales tax was going to come in that high and sales tax came in much higher than what we anticipated. So they got an additional payment of those additional funds that we did not anticipate. So what I was recommending is, you know, if the past couple of years hold true, we will have additional funds that we will be giving, that anyway, that will be going towards capital, to be spent towards capital. And it's not budgeted, it's not in their appropriation that we have budgeted to them, it's that shore-up money. And we could, we could go ahead and front that and then when that shore-up time comes, we could pull the 400 back out of that. So that's one way that we can do that.
That's what I was trying to imply, based on your recommendation as well, is at this point, if we front-loaded it, pay it back through this, because it was capital, through sales tax, right? And then if, like James said, in the future, if the future board wants to go back and look at a safety and security budget, because I, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm okay with that, as well as to get them the money to be able to get these installed this summer to, you know, because a lot of, I've received a lot of calls from parents and teachers that are concerned about their safety in these schools. And they're so glad that we've been able to work with the sheriff and get SROs in all these schools that at least Riddell State's will. And so, I mean, I was in agreement, that's where I was going with basically recouping it.
And Commissioner Brown, to answer your question, regarding the, the safety and security budget, putting that back in place, I, I do agree with Chairman Mallory. We kind of got our hands slapped when we allocated funds for gate guards, if everybody remembers that. We allocated funds for a specific purpose. We had that as a separate line item, then we went and created the safety and security for a specific purpose, hoping to get the quarter cent sales tax. And then we kind of went full circle and said, "No, we're giving you lump sum, it's up to you to decide how to spend those funds." If you want, if you want to set aside a set of funds for safety and security, we're not going to dictate how the school board, because they're a separate elected body, we're not going to dictate how you spend those funds. We're giving you lump sum for operational and lump sum for capital and it's up to you to decide how you want to spend it. And, and that's been a painful circle that we've gone all the way around in, and it's been painful to get back to lump sum, but we're back to lump sum and, and understanding and having gone through that circle and the pain associated with it, I would recommend we stick with lump sum.
Let them allocate where they need to. I mean, I get it. I mean, we did go through that.
But you're, you think your board's good with storing it like that and taking it out of the?
Just basic, well, those funds are required to go to the schools, those are...
The, the sales tax dollars, yes.
Sales tax dollars are earmarked for capital for schools.
Correct.
And what I'm saying is, that's a mechanism that we could use to recoup. So what I'm suggesting is that we approve the, up to $500,000 of disbursement of funds to help you accelerate the process. Those funds being subject to recoupment from whatever pots of funds present themselves, whether that's shoring up the sales tax piece this year, whether it's grant funding that you're able to obtain, or whether it's next year's capital budget, or next year's total budget, we'll say, whatever you want.
Well, I, I think one of the things is, it depends on if, you know, we're, we're still waiting, I know y'all have given us a number, but we're still waiting on y'all's final, final, final approval.
You'll get that tonight.
Get that tonight.
I know. So at that point in time, if it's going to come out of the shore-up fund, then we would already essentially kind of know what we have. So we could go through our normal processes because it's essentially coming out of the capital funding that we have. I mean, I do believe, and that would be something I would like to check with Dr. James on, just to follow our board processes and things. Because there's those funding is already there and we have processes that they ask us to go through to ask for certain amounts of money and get approval for. And so if it's going to come out of our shore-up fund, I would essentially just go to them and say, you know, "Are we able to in July, start this process with doing that?" And we would already have our budget because our budget starts in July. There may not be a need in reality to shore back up because we would have to...
But now, but now understand that those shore-up funds are not in your budget.
Correct. I know.
Okay.
What I mean is, we would still be using a form of the budget allocated to...
So you're counting the chickens before they hatch?
Why don't we, why don't we just table this and let you talk to the, your board and Dr. James about what we suggested and then let you get back, let Dr. James get back to Beth.
Or we could approve it, subject to recoupment and the agreement.
I mean, I, I think that those are fine. What I was saying was if, and from what I was understanding on that was, Ms. Moll was saying that we would just pull it back out of the shore-up funds when they come. So if, that's the case, it is out of our capital funds we already have for this school year. So with July just being really recently around the corner, we're, and if the budget is approved tonight, we can start making choices about how we spend those capital funds, that lump sum, you know, with, pretty recently, we can start working through that with our board.
But we don't know what those, you know, whether, if there will be funds.
Right.
It's, it's sort of a wing and a prayer, you know.
We assume there's going to be with the sales tax revenues, but...
We do. So I mean, I, I'm perfectly fine, either one, it will all essentially work itself out, as you said, whether we end up paying it back through a grant fund or it comes out of our shore-up fund, or we work that out either way. I mean, to me, it, it kind of seems like it's evening itself out.
Well, at the end of the day, we, we totally understand and support you're accelerating the process.
Absolutely. And I, and I, I understand that too, and I appreciate your support for that.
And Mr. Ivey, Commissioner Norman has dropped off the mainline, so we've got him here, and he had a question. He wanted to know about the gate guard at Northwest Iredale and why the gate guard is no longer at West Iredale.
I would, I would have to direct that. I'm going to have to find out the answer for that. I was under the impression that we were in the process of, of finding somebody to do gate guards. And the last time that I was actually at West Iredale, there was a gate guard there. We had an individual that had taken on that role and was checking people in, and that was pretty recently. So it would be news to me that we didn't have one.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so...
So would it, would it be helpful for us to go ahead and formally pass a motion subject to the recoupment process and then ultimately subject to the school board deciding, yes, that's what we want to do, or just whether you want to work it into your budget based on the expectation of having funds?
Yes, I will ask them if I can add that on to the agenda for Monday.
Okay.
When I talked to Dr. James before that, on the gate guards for Marvin, because I was asked that after the Texas situation, and Dr. James said y'all were in the process of hiring gate guards, but the person that was in there was just a school representative. It wasn't really like a guard temporarily, I guess. But he said, "I think y'all were in the process of getting a company vetted to, to provide those gate guards." That's the information he gave me.
Yes, we've, we've had different scenarios this year for gate guards, different ways that we fulfill those positions.
Okay. Any further comment? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to provide the funding up to $500,000 and that funding per the manager's request also to be taken out of the shore-up money, monies if available. If not, would come out of their future capital. Basically, at this point, it would be recouped. We would be recouped somewhere unless the school system in the meantime advises us they don't need it.
And this is subject to the school board's approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Marvin Good. We'll mark, we'll mark that off as what, consent?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Tim, appreciate it.
Okay. The next item is a request from the library for approval to apply for the Bright Ideas Grant from the State Library of North Carolina in the amount of $10,000. Ms. Julie Moore is here to make this presentation.
I'll be quick, since we're getting close to the seven o'clock hour. The library is requesting approval to apply for a State Library of North Carolina Bright Ideas Grant in the amount of $10,000. We would like to use this grant opportunity to create what we're going to call resiliency kits for seniors and adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The funds will be used to purchase items to create 12 large group kits and 10 small library kits plus launchpads. The large group kits will be used primarily for outreach to adult daycares, senior centers, and group homes for adults. And the small library kits would be available to check out in the library. The kits would include toys that will assist groups with stroke recovery, side effects of dementia, Alzheimer's, refined motor skills and learning, and the launchpads would be preloaded tablets that have with-brain games that do not require internet connection. The launchpads would be available to check out in the library too, but also delivered to nursing homes and adult facilities. So, does anybody have any questions about what we would be doing? The grant does not require any matching funds, which is nice. They have a little bit turnaround when we apply by June 15th, they'll let us know within 10 days if we've been awarded the grant. They've had this going on for a couple of months, but I strategically placed it on this one so that it would be added to the new budget instead of amending our old budget because we have through, I want to say, September 30th or October 30th to spend the funds and get the items.
Any questions or comments for Julie? Consent?
Stand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Julie.
The next item is a request from Planning and Development for approval to select Clarion and Associates for an update to the 2030 Horizon Plan and approve Budget Amendment Number 48. Matthews, I'm stealing your thunder, but the contract is not in here, but the additional request is to authorize the manager to sign the contract once it's finalized. And Matthew Todd is here to make this presentation to the board.
I'm trying to be faster than Julie. Our current plan, y'all often hear about it with rezonings, it's the 2030 Horizon Plan. It's put in place in 2009. It's time to update that plan. We budgeted for this a couple of years ago, started the budgeting process, and we were waiting on our transportation plan to finish up so it would tie into this plan. We have finished that process, so now we're moving forward with this plan. Went through a request for proposals, we got four consultants that put in excellent proposals. Through our scoring ranking, we ended up selecting or recommending Clarion. They are the ones that currently did our 2009 plan. The main staff member now was a staff member at that time, so an excellent background knowledge. Clarion's also done, recently done Statezal and Moorezal's land use plans, as well as Davidson, I believe. So we definitely feel that they are the best candidate of those that put in. And they're, they're going to be looking at updating the land use plan, which will make recommendations, wide range, not just the land use map that we often see with our rezonings. There's many other factors that help guide our department internally on decisions. Other departments end up getting involved in this process as we go through it. It will come up with action items. There'll be a heavy, heavy emphasis looking at the future commercial, future industrial development. Clarion's bringing Rose Associates part of the package, which is a, is a firm that specializes in real estate and economic development. I think they've worked with the towns and Iredale EDC prior. So I think we're getting a, definitely a lot for, for the county with this selection.
They, they certainly have all the bona fides checked and I think you have warm and fuzzy. If you can do me a favor, or do all of us a favor, don't draw circles around nodes. Figure out what the tracts of land are and identify them that way. You know what I mean?
I know what you mean. That will be a discussion, absolutely.
All right. Any further discussion?
Projected year? I'm sorry. We talked about 2030, or looking at 20...
We, we don't have a name for it yet. We've not picked a horizon year, but something along those lines, most likely, yes.
Okay.
2050, Tom.
2050 somewhere, didn't it?
Yeah. Okay. Any further quen, questions or comments? Consent?
Stand.
Thank you, Matthew.
Sure.
Okay. Very good. The next item is a request from Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 45 to recognize inappropriate fairgrounds revenues for utilities, alarm testing, and tent rentals for the fair. Ms. Dev Cheek is here to make this presentation to the board.
Thank you. This item is to increase some budget authority in the fair... Thank you. This item is to increase some budget authority in the fairgrounds department to be able to pay for some overages on utilities, alarm fees, and also to be able to issue a purchase order for tent rental for next fiscal year. So I'm asking for approval of Budget Amendment 45. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do we, does that revenue come out of, what are we being paid, remind me, from Kiwanis for using, or are we for the fair, for rental?
The reimbursement currently is at $14,865, and we are just now appropriating it. We didn't have a budget for that, so now I'm asking for you to put that into the budget so I can appropriate it for the expenditures.
So we would be spending another on top of that, out of our pocket for them to have the fair?
No, they reimburse all costs back to us, and then this past year, if I remember correctly, they also contributed about $8,000. Is that right, Susan?
That's correct.
$8,000. They gave an additional $8,000 to Iredell County for that purpose.
That's what was misleading, kind of. It just shows that we get 14 from them.
They are reimbursing us all of our costs while they had the fair, and that's to recognize the reimbursement.
Okay. They just looked like we were going to pay that, and their reimbursement was 14,000.
And we budget the 8,000, because we expect that each year. That's another reason why we didn't need a budget amendment for that part of it.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Zan.
Okay, thank you.
The next item, Ms. Cheek also has, and that's a request from Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 46 to recognize an appropriate insurance claim proceeds. Ms. Cheek?
Thank you. Each year, near the end of the year, we bring a budget amendment to you to appropriate insurance proceeds that we have received throughout the fiscal year, and we put those monies back into the different departmental lines that have exceeded their maintenance and repair budget. So this is just a request to take those insurance proceeds that we already have received, and I'm now asking you to add those to the maintenance and repair lines in the different departments where it's needed.
So those proceeds, like if there's a wreck, Sheriff's Deputy Car or something, those proceeds go right back in to replace or repair that vehicle into his budget, or are we paying for that through another budget?
We're putting it into his, what we do is if he comes up short, he's coming up short on maintenance and repair vehicles, then we add insurance proceeds to keep him whole. If he's able to manage it, if the departments are able to manage it within their budget, and we don't need to appropriate those insurance proceeds, we just do that if they're running short.
Only do that to assure them up and break them even, if necessary. I got you.
Because we guesstimate how much we're going to spend making some repair vehicles, but it depends on how many wrecked vehicles--
Never know how many deer--
You don't know. So--
Exactly.
You can't budget what you can't see, right?
That's right.
Okay. Any additional questions? Consent?
Consent.
Thank you. Ms. Cheek also has the next item, and that's a request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 47 in the amount of $100,000 to appropriate additional revenue in the Sheriff's Fund, which records warrants and judgment collections and distributions.
I'm going to try to explain to you one more time about agency funds, and that we take in certain monies that are not ours. We turn right around and we send it out. This fiscal year, the General Accounting Principals Board decided that they wanted budgets in those funds. It was a complete guesstimate as to what that was going to be. It's not our revenue, it's not our expense, but they still wanted a budget in place. And I'll address that again when we adopt the budget at seven. But the Sheriff's Fund has come up short as far as the budget that we estimated for paying of warrants and judgments. So this is just a budget amendment to add enough to the budget so that we can continue out the rest of this year and pay out the money that we need to.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Mr. Norman?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you good with the Budget Amendment 47 in the amount of $100,000?
Aye, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The next item is a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from May 17, 2022.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the North Carolina U Soccer Association Charter Discussion, and this is something that we've talked about a few different times, and wanted to bring this back for discussion with the board. So, and I've kind of given a little bit of a summary, or I gave a summary prior, regarding the different decisions. But this is something we've talked about since 2018, and we've kind of gone back and looked to see what the future is regarding Iredell County parks and recreation, and where we should be focusing our time and efforts. And we, the board, kind of set a direction about transitioning from the athletic programming regarding soccer, because there are 40 different nonprofit athletic associations that provide all different times of, kinds of athletic opportunities. And really, Iredell County was the only provider of the soccer at that point, but not for football, cheerleading, lacrosse, all those other different athletics. So the decision was to try to transition to that, and we created a partnership with Impact Soccer. And the reason we have that partnership is with them is because we are, we share a charter. They do the challenge portion of the charter, and Iredell County did the recreation portion of the charter. Back when COVID hit, Impact picked up and started providing the, and provided during that COVID year, the recreation portion of that charter, and started providing that recreational opportunity, because Iredell County could not. Since that point in time, the City of Statesville has received an athletic, a recreation level charter for soccer. And the City of Statesville has been providing soccer for that demographic, and has actually done a very good job with their program, has a lot of participants, and quite frankly, they are providing the program cheaper than we did when we were doing it. So we've kind of gone back full circle. We were coming back to the discussion regarding the charter, because North Carolina U Soccer Association, that charter is set to renew January the 1st, and they have come back to us and said, if you're going to get out of the charter and transition it over to Impact and get Iredell County out of it, the cleanest time to do that is when it renews in, on January 1, oh, not January 1, June 1. I'm sorry. And Jen's here, Jen, if I may speak, fix it. So my resident expert's sitting there trying to make sure I get it right, but June 1. So not, it was something that I sent out to the board, and the board wanted to have a discussion about it. So we asked for an extension, so we were able to get a short extension of that June 1 renewal of the charter, for the board to be able to have the conversation, if you feel comfortable in transitioning from that charter and letting Impact have that charter. So we've talked to Impact. Impact is ready to take on that charter. They have done all the legwork with bylaws. They're ready for the representation portion of it, because we actually have some staff members that serve on that board for the charter. So our staff members will transition off, and then their staff members will transition on. So wanted to bring it back to the board to have this conversation. This is really, we're not providing soccer programming, so us being on that charter but not providing the programming, it's cleaner to go ahead and get us off the charter. If at any point the board does want to pick that back up, we could go ahead and apply for a new charter to provide recreational level soccer, just like the City of Statesville did, and they received it. We could go and do the same thing if the board at that point in time decided they wanted to do that. So, but anyway, that's what we're bringing back for discussion to the board. Did I miss anything, Jen?
I did.
Okay, thank you.
What do we charge these people and/or anybody else for the field we're maintaining? Are we on, are we reimbursed, are we getting reimbursed? I know this is a for-profit agency. I know some of the other places that we use would be more rec or school-associated, but do these people that play for profit, do they reimburse us for what we're doing for them as far as field maintenance?
Or field use, we have, that's separate. That's in--
I know it's not in this, I'm just asking--
That's in what we talked about at our budget workshop, as far as our cost recovery model, and what we charge, and I don't have that off the top of my head. Jen, do you know that off the top of your head, as far as what our feeds are for that?
Athletic associations or--
I was just asked by the public, once they saw this, and this has just been a topic that's been sore for people over the years, but I guess what I'm asking is, the difference between this organization and what we were doing before we stopped, and the City of Statesville and others, I think there, this is a for-profit travel.
They are non-profit. Impact is a non-profit.
Impact's--
They're nonprofit, so they're not for, they're not the travel league that is making profit?
No, there are other groups that do that. This particular group is Impact FC, and they have been a part of our charter for a number of years. They have been our competitive team.
Right.
Because we are no longer offering the recreational level play, it really doesn't make sense for our staff to continue to be involved on that role, but Impact is ready and willing to take ownership of it, for them to move forward with competitive play.
I know, I agree. From a business perspective, it makes sense. It's just, you know, when we stopped doing programming because of lack of revenue, it's just a sore subject for the public, and, you know, we hoped we could do more for that. From a business perspective, it makes sense if we're not going to do that or enter back into that.
Are the same kids able to play?
What?
Are the same children able to play that are interested?
The children are playing, I guess, for these guys or Statesville, or somebody's providing that level of play. And we've provided scholarships in the past to make sure--
So as long as the kids--
--all these kids are participating. Yeah. This is just, what she's saying is, we've, it's been just a sore subject over the years, because we always hope to have a revenue stream. From a business perspective, it makes sense to get off of this, if we're not going to get back into the programming aspect, because we've got staff people and others serving, as Beth said, on this committee. I guess from my seat, it's just been, I've always hoped we could do more, but we're doing what we can. I mean, from a business perspective, this makes sense.
I think we got to move forward and let, make sure the kids have what they need, and that's what we're doing with Statesville.
Exactly.
And they're able to do it cheaper. So our objective is to make sure we can--
The kids can participate.
--get the same amount of what they're getting out of it at the least amount of money.
Right.
And, you know, I had three calls today, and people were asking me, you know, if we would do this a certain way, we could make money. We're not in business to make money off of these kids. We're in business to make sure that they have the parks and wrecks that they need to do what they need to go out and play.
And I will say that Impact has said that maybe after a year or two, they may want to offer up recreational level play as well, which will create more opportunities. So, I mean--
And there is another--
To you, Vice Chair Nader, there's, there are many options to serve additional children, and the children are not going unserved.
I guess that's our perspective, but just try to help where we can.
And understanding that, you know, soccer was an orphan athletic endeavor in the 90s. There was no structure, there were no teams, and the county stepped in to assist in getting that off the ground. They've obviously matured over the years to where you can see nothing hardly but soccer on a year-round basis. And along the way, an additional recreation, you know, the South Iredell Soccer Association has provided the same service for the southern end of the county. So Statesville has now stepped up and is providing the same service north. And now, rather than just us supporting soccer but not programming anything else, it just treats all of our athletic endeavors the same. And it removes the county from liability of players that we had no real control over, but which, you know, if we're involved, then that's, you know, lawyers look for deep pockets. So any further discussion?
I just want to say, the sheriff kids and these organizations get great feedback from the parents for providing the league like he provides, and the kids, to Melissa's point, giving them an outlet to participate in something has always been our goal, and that's what I'd like to make sure. If we need to help in more of that capacity, I'd love to see us do that if necessary.
Okay. Any further discussion? Consent?
Consent.
Okay, it's after seven o'clock. We've got, the last item here is approval and adoption of the fiscal year budget ordinance.
That's for the seven o'clock.
But isn't that after--
That's for the seven o'clock, so we're done with the consent agenda.
Okay. All right. Well, let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll resume with the seven o'clock meeting at 7:10.